These articles to town council and I said, is there a way that we can write these appropriately? So that we don't have to like, is it necessary legally to have three separate articles? Lauren came back, she suggested this wording and that's why I left it with this wording. If we want to have a separate article, it's not legally necessary, which is why I came up with this. Article fifth, she reviewed the language approved that and then it was probably article six. That could have been six and seven. So that's how I got to where we are here. If there's any changes, please let me know.
So what you're saying is if you were gonna split anything, you would have split six and make it six and seven. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but I should be fine the way that it's written here.
Okay, actually, I picked that up myself. I think, I think we need a second, a second warrant article for six. There's two totally different thoughts here and I think it's quite confusing to anybody to understand at a distance. But it is a matter of transferring some funds which were appropriated, which were appropriated and otherwise. If it was simply a matter of using those funds.
Five okay? Is five okay?
Well, yeah.
Before we go to six, because I understand six is complicated, which is why I ran it by town council.
Is there anything in particular that you changed on six that makes a difference, did you think? No, you fixed it up.
Number five, is there any issue with number five?
Number five is an issue. Done. Let's move on.
Okay, number six. This is how town council said to do it. I, great minds think alike, because I thought, well, maybe we should have this page two or three as an appendix. And I said, nope, not gonna do too much. I don't wanna be too crazy here. Rock the boat. So I left it in. I'm open to suggestions. But the bottom line is that if we separate this into two articles, it's not legally necessary. And it means that we renumber the rest of the document, which I'm happy to do if that's what you want. But I can't commit to doing all individual articles all over again, because I can already.
Can I put up with that? Worst comes to worst, just put that article near the end so we don't have to renumber everything.
Dick?
It doesn't have to run together.
Dick, the virtually, the entire article as proposed by Masco is included in the language in article six. So that both the capital request.
It needs to be fixed, right. You have to fix the warrant.
I'm just saying.
There's nothing wrong with the warrant.
There's nothing wrong with the warrant.
The warrant text in order to do this, to break it out, you have to change the warrant text, yes.
No, I'm disagreeing with you. I'm saying it already has been changed. It already contains almost the entire language. And certainly, all the critical pieces of it are in six right now. And because it's about capital items, it is including both what was voted for capital last year that we didn't spend, that we'd like to put towards this capital request. And it includes the new capital request. But it explains it very clearly. If you look at the, it says, "And further to transfer thirty thousand dollars from the amount appropriated under article six of May 2nd, 2017 annual town meeting." It is explicitly clear in the language of this. There is no confusion, particularly with the following capital budget request, which shows what the total is going to go to. I mean, if anything, it would complicate it, in my view, in the eyes of. What it's basically saying is we didn't spend everything. You voted us last year, so we're gonna put it towards this this year.
Can we move on?
No, wait, just a second. Let me, let me cover this particular part. "And further to transfer thirty thousand dollars from an amount appropriated in article six of last year, annual town meeting, for fire suppression systems to be used instead of for replacement of lock sets." So the issue in my mind in part, if this was simply to transfer thirty thousand towards this, it's not. It's to do a totally different thing. It's to take that thirty thousand dollars that was previously appropriated and now not use it for any of the items that are listed below, but rather for a specific fire suppression system. That's the way I read it.
It's not for a fire suppression system. It's to do the locks.
Oh, excuse me, from the fire suppression.
Instead of.
I'm sorry, used instead for replacement of locks. Where again, locks do not occur at all in this capital list that you have there. So it's hard for somebody to reconcile essentially what's going on. It's two things that are going on. That's why it's appropriate. And again, for purposes of renumbering, just put this down near the end. You don't have to put it near the beginning.
All I can say.
Well, yeah, I don't like that idea.
I think smart people will be able to figure it out. It can be explained as necessary in the presentation.
Okay.
I go, not related to the incident. Just Kelly.
But we do have, we do have to create a schedule, Appendix B. You can't put all of that garbage, so to speak. That's the stuff that logically is an appendix. And all you have to do is reference it as an appendix. Because other ones you wind up agitating extra blank spaces, everything else.
Talk about page four of twenty-one, Dick?
Yeah.
The chart that they just sent us with all the data. It's a great thing to be an appendix. It's very simple. You just reference it as an appendix.
Fine. That's fine. That's all gathered.
No, we're just doing it like we do with the article letter.
Okay. In the explanation, I have two questions about the explanation on six. So then, so the second sentence that starts, so it was, I actually was enlightened at the last meeting that this is a request, not an assessment.
Yes.
Okay, but then we, but then it says in the second sentence, the assessment. I mean, just the explanation. So shouldn't it say like the share to the town of Boxford or something like that?
I have.
You're at the end of six, is that what you want?
The explanation of six.
So instead of assessment, change it to share.
I have an explanation because we went through this.
Right there where it says the assessment.
It is a request. And if the motion passes, if it passes in three towns, it becomes an assessment. So if it passes.
Just in this, I'd rather that it says the share or something like that, just don't want.
Yeah, I.
So it talks to you on share.
That clarifies it.
I don't care. The legal language we use.
Then, just, unless I just might not be following. But so then in the same thing, it says, so what this stuff is being used for, to purchase school safety and security systems. But some, it's some of that, but then some of the stuff's other than that, right? So combined with those who are to purchase school safety and security systems, or not the capital, like something like that. I don't, unless I'm not understanding what they are. I don't think they're all, is everything.
Well, you see the data closets is because.
Why don't you just put down the list of. Or just the stuff. The items stated, the items listed.
Like, like we do with the, the anonymous budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I never.
Can we do that, anybody object to it?
No, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
So on that, but in that, in that same wording, the third line down, it begins district agreement, which amounts to, which will be combined with those approved in Middleton and whatever. I think it's, it's, it's wrong to suggest that they are approved in. They have not yet been approved. And my suggestion was we change the wording to those requested of Middleton and Boxford. I mean, it gets you the same idea. You have to get them in. But I think to suggest that they're, that they're approved and we don't know that they're approved in. So just say that they're, again, requested of Middleton and Boxford.
Can we explain that? Not put it in the language, but put it in the explanation? Of which there is none yet right now.
Oh, isn't that what we're talking about?
We're down in the.
That's the explanation, yes.
That is down in the.
There's the fourth line.
Oh, I was gonna, I was looking at the, I'm sorry, not the recommendation you wrote.
It's in the fourth line.
Instead of those approved, it's requested of.
Those requested of.
I'm looking at the italicized part that sometimes appears at the end, which provides a little bit more detail.
Yes, that's the sum.
That, to me, would be the place where you sort of say, this article requires approval in all three towns in order for the assessment to be made by Masconama Regional School District.
Well, changing the word approved to those requested of Middleton or Boxford cuts it as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I don't care too much when Mary or I'm that, to be honest, I'm sure.
Everybody okay? We're moving on.
I do have a legal, because I have to admit, I'm not gonna be comfortable with this. And I think it should have been taken up last year. I've been through, again, the agreement between the towns and Masconama. And I see no place that this, that this is handled. Capital items are understood to be there, but not of this nature. They need to be in the budget or as capital. And very, to me, very clearly defines what it considers capital. So I cannot, I cannot support this because I think it is essentially out of, out of the bounds of what the agreement exists between the towns and the regional school district.
Can you just clarify, you can't support it being placed in the warrant, or you don't support it substantively?
I don't support it as a supplemental item in the warrant. It is required to be part of the budget. They can, they can have it as part of it, but it is part of the overall operations. It's not part of the quote capital. There is a description of capital in here.
Why did this not raise the question last year?
Please?
Why did?
Why did I not raise it?
Well, you or anybody, just why did it not come up as an issue last year?
I think, I think it was a failure on the part of the board last year.
Well, my opinion is we're not gonna change it. This stays here.
The other two towns, I think, if we treat them as separate articles.
I just wanna explain why. I can't, I appreciate trying to fix, fixing it up by putting the Appendix B and fixing the approved and things like that. But when it comes down to it, this particular article, for that reason, I cannot, I cannot approve. Because I think it's, I don't think it's in accord with our agreement. An acceptance is.
Well, we've known about it, we know, we've known it's gonna be there for several weeks.
Well, months, actually. We said in December.
It didn't come up until now. And I think we gotta move on.
Yep, yes. I'm saying, I'll move on, but I think it's the wrong thing to do.
Dick, the reason this came about was an attempt led by Costa Portakis of the school committee to put more transparency in making clear what we really need to run the place and what we need with major repairs and, in most of these cases, mandated improvements. And the issue was that it made our budget look like it was going like this. And if we did put it in the budget and we were held to a three percent, for instance, or we chose to stay the three percent, we would end up not doing things that ultimately would cause damage to the building or lack of compliance with federal and state guidelines. So it was decided to put it in. They're extra, not expected, has to do with the building being almost twenty years old. So the intent, which I think was well-intentioned, is to make it clear, this is what it's costing to keep our building going for now. And so maybe the intent was good. If there is not the legal basis upon which to do this, probably that ought to be discussed for next year, because there might be another one next year. I don't know.
I think the agreement can be adjusted. That's the way to fix it, is to do the agreement. I did say it, I did say it to people I talked with last year. I had some expressed time that I thought it was wrong.
I think I remember two years ago, when we, when Masco came to us at a board of selectmen's meeting and said, "We wanna have a capital improvement budget," and we declined to go along with it.
Absolutely.
We said, "We're not gonna do it because it circumvents the budget process."
Right.
It was our feeling at that point.
Right, right.
And.
Good number.
It's back.
Okay, so.
Well, we're gonna move on anyway. I'm not gonna change, I'm not gonna agree to change it, to stage it again.
Article seven?
Article seven.
I need to find out when they are voting their final budget. I'm not aware. I'm meant to do that today. But I'm hoping I can get these numbers finalized.
Anybody see any problem with it, other than the numbers? Dick?
We did, we did take out, I can go with it, but we had it as, it's the assessment, oh, the assessment of, okay. Why did we, why did we replace Topsfield with the towns? It just seems to it's clearer to say for Topsfield's share of the assessment. The towns, it's good, it's capitalized, but it's just, it's a more complex way of saying it. It's just Topsfield's share. It's the way we've done it in many years. I don't understand what, it seems clear if we did it as Topsfields instead of the towns. I can leave it the way it is.
That doesn't change anything.
It doesn't change anything.
Let's get on.
It's, it's just, all but.
We're okay with article seven. Article eight. It should be an easy one.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Article nine, that should be an easy one.
Well, why are we including a dollar amount?
Because the other.
Wait, wait, wait. The state has provided us with what we will get. And there's a big thing about getting it in April, so that we can do construction in that. Have we ever heard of nine C cuts?
Yes.
There's no reason in my mind to what, put these dollars in. We never have in the past. So it would seem to me that we want to leave it as, we can accept chapter ninety money, whatever it happens to be.
The rationale for the.
Kelly, go ahead.
The rationale of the auditor was what?
He wants to see a number in there so that it's tied to something.
Who wants a number?
The town auditor from Dick Hinston.
Well, that's.
He suggested it to the town.
He suggested we don't have to do it.
Oh, we don't have to do it.
We don't have to do it. I mean, if the state said we had to do it, it's a different story. But it's a suggestion from the auditor. I understand what the auditor's saying. I don't think the auditor understands how perhaps the state does business, but they are things, again.
I wouldn't go that way.
Like nine C cuts and we try to commit ourselves with some dollars.
Can we move on and say, it's New Year, to accept and expend any additional sums?
Any, any sum.
Any, any sum.
It's not additional, yeah.
Yeah, it's not additional.
So if the auditor puts this stuff in next year's audit, I wanna be, for the record, I tried to put it in, it got taken out.
I'll remember next year, if it happens to be here. If the question comes up again, do it.
We're not shooting, Kelly. We just wanna.
No, I'm just, he told us to put it in, that's what I did. We could be at this all day.
Can we move on?
Yes, yes.
Lease of Emerson Field.
Looks good to me.
Good. Article eleven.
Looks good to me.
Good. Move on. Article twelve, should be okay. Fifteen hundred dollars. Article twelve, Dick?
Yep.
Where'd John go?
Yep.
Article thirteen.
So I think article thirteen has been nicely improved. I appreciate that. We're taking out unnecessary references there. Is it necessary to put this created pursuant to in the, in the actual recommendation? Or is it really just part of a comment in the, in the explanation? We can leave it as it is, but I think it's a, it's a tough way to do it. I can go with it as it is at this point, but it's made it tougher than it needs to be. Okay.
Okay, okay. Here we go. Article thirteen is done. Article fourteen.
So is it staying in or is it?
Yeah, stay in.
It's staying.
Article fourteen.
Yep, it's okay. Same comment, Kelly.
Okay, article fourteen is approved. Article fifteen.
Good, same, same comments.
Article fifteen is good. Article sixteen.
So on, on article fifteen though, in the explanation, what we often do is, the way we put it in, and I saw some, some changes there too, is we're talking about it being voted. The typical way we would say it is, this article would establish, this article, last year doesn't, established last year is not necessary. The fact that it was voted, it's, it's just awkward wording and I don't know how it all gets in there all the time. I will, I will live with it, but I think it's that at least said, instead of trying to say, the fund was approved last year. How it was approved, voted, whatever, what is, it was voted, it was voted yes or it was voted no? It was, it was approved, it was voted yes, so to speak. So I think.
I suggest we just delete the word voted and.
What's that?
Just delete voted and.
Voted and.
The fund was established in.
Yep.
The fund was established.
Established, yes, excellent.
Good enough. Fifteenth is good.
Yep.
Article sixteen, water tank inspections. Should be easy.
It looks good.
Good. Article seventeen, town facilities repair and maintenance fund.
I'm going to recommend, I think it was eighteen thousand five hundred that the capital plan last year recommended should be our minimum contribution. So I'll update that with that new number. Well, it's not a new number, it's the same number. I was just leaving it open with the acknowledgement that it might be a placeholder. If something else gets dropped and they decide that they wanna add more money to it, they can. But I'm not aware of any substantial cost increases right now, because we've been doing a good job at trying to stay ahead of our repairs. But eighteen, I think it's eighteen thousand five hundred. I'll update that for you and get that to everyone.
Everybody satisfied with that?
Yep.
Article eighteen.
We've added the words to the title, "And building repairs." The intent is really to deal with the outside only. This is not legal, it's just the title. But it seems to me, was there a particular reason that "and building repairs" was added to that, just off?
Because they're doing more than just painting and scraping. The last time we said painting and scraping, people said, "What? How much for that? Just for painting and scraping?" So some repairs as well.
But it doesn't say, hopefully, it doesn't say painting and scraping at all. I don't think that's in there at all.
Well, that's part of the scope of the project.
What's that?
That is part of the scope of the project. And I got my head bit off the last time I said painting and scraping. So there's gonna be some wood repair involved, so I decided that building repairs was appropriate. If you feel differently, by all means.
I don't see it as a big deal. I don't, we at least got the name of the Hearst building.
Yeah, that's right.
We got that out. My one request on this is, again, just in the description, I don't think everybody knows where it is. I had suggested having located that Pine Grove Cemetery.
And the word severe got put in there in the explanation. That's like a judgmental factor. They haven't, I talked with Steve, he didn't say that at all. I think we should take the word severe out. It's not a big deal, but I think we should take it out. Severe means different things to different people in different places, he said.
Add located at Pine Grove Cemetery, delete severe.
Even though it says it in the main.
Says severe in the main?
Have you seen it?
Oh, it's already there.
Have you seen the building?
Yeah.
It looks severe to me.
In the Pine Grove Cemetery.
Okay, where is this word severe? And am I just chopping it out wherever it was? I can't see it.
Is everybody happy?
No, I don't know where it is.
It's in the third line down. It's in the opposite. I've been concentrating. It's the third line down, ah, right here. It's fine, nevermind. Says it's in Pine Grove Cemetery.
We aren't building the Pine Grove Cemetery.
How did the word get in there? Steve didn't put it in there.
Oh, for God's sakes.
Gone.
Done, gone.
It's gone.
Wait, why can't I see it? Where is it? I still can't find it. And I'll just write, no severe.
It's right down there.
Oh, there it is.
Eighteen is done.
No severe.
Nineteen. Should be done. Article twenty. Done. Article twenty-one. Done. Article twenty-two.
I, I need to make revisions to this. I've been, I had a woman come in from King's Info Services.
I met her today.
Oh, okay. So I had a really good chance to talk with her about the initial ideas behind this. And I'm going to downscale this and change, I think, after my conversation with her about her process and what they do, that she feels that if we could use this opportunity of having her here, she's going to be able to give us a quote probably by early next week. But what I'm going to recommend is that we don't invest in any of the software or the scanning right now. That we focus on getting an inventory of our existing, all of the, all of the records that we currently have. And so the amount of money that I'll be requesting for this will be reduced substantially. And I will phase it in and identify it in future years of a capital project. She felt very secure, without giving me a number, that she felt that forty thousand dollars would be a very good place for us to be able to analyze all of the current records that we have and get us a system that can then be used as a master plan moving forward. So I would be recommending that we would strike, we would sort of strip this down, take out the software in a couple of pieces. I'll rewrite this and I will get a better scope from her and I will be plugging in that number. So when I plug in that number, that would potentially allow for us to allocate, if the FinCon so chooses, additional monies that they can use perhaps to help pay for some of our, the long-term debt. They'll be in a substantial amount of money if they wanted to invest that in the capital stabilization plan, they can do that. But I'll leave that to them. But it looks like we'll definitely be able to pare this back and maybe gradually phase in where we feel we need the best bang for our buck in terms of managing the records we currently have and identifying the ones that need to be up front and center when we move back to town hall versus the ones that can be destroyed or, or digitized in the future. So I think we have a really good plan set out for us and I just need the opportunity tomorrow to update this article and to get that out to everybody for further consideration.
That's, that's fine with me. I was, I was a little bit concerned about the initial scope of the job of trying to go through and clean it all up and, and throw a whole bunch of stuff out and digitize it all before we move back to town hall.
So that was, that was a question. There was a suggestion, so we're gonna try to do all of this before we went back to town hall. What we're saying is, maybe we'll even get to, if we change it, that we're not even committing to, we don't have to do anything before we get back to town hall. Whether it's, some of it's done beforehand, some of it's done after, does not make a real difference, right? Well, not, there's not gonna be a timeframe on it.
I'm taking everything off the plate except for one project that will be done now before we go to town hall.
But not necessarily before. I mean, it doesn't have to be, right?
No, it would be before, because we need to know what records we have here before we lug a hundred forty years of paper back into the new town hall.
So you wanna know which one to put up front?
Exactly. But we can do that.
And they might be.
This is, wait a minute, this is good. This has nothing to do, so to speak, with scanning or anything like that.
Correct. I'm taking scanning off the table.
Rather, it has to do with records retention evaluation.
Inventory, management, system.
Records retention requirements.
Oh, good, okay.
Good.
Yeah.
Records retention.
So you'll rewrite that.
So we could clean some, we, literally, if we had the contract right now, the person could be working with us and say, "This, this, and this, the government says you do not have to keep." And so our records retention could sign off and say, "Bring the truck, dump it in the trash, next."
Exactly.
Okay.
So we'll have a master plan moving forward. So I'll work on.
She's gonna rewrite that. Twenty-third, stabilization fund, should be easy. So no comment, we're moving on. Twenty-five, twenty-four, capital stabilization fund. No comments, we're moving on. Twenty-fifth, other post-employment pension OPEB trust fund. Moving on. Article twenty-sixth.
Catching up with you, wait a second.
Everybody happy with that? Article twenty-seven. Article twenty-eight.
They cleaned all of this stuff up, right? They cleaned all of this stuff up, right? Yes. Records, yes, okay.
Article twenty-ninth. Article thirtieth.
Okay. Now, now wait, now, now we're getting into the zoning stuff. I, I hadn't spent much time on the zoning stuff because it was very sketchy and I understood that that was, the, the planning board was still working on it. So once again, you said that Martha was working with Town Council and just give us a, back out again on where we are with the zoning.
She's just on one article, she's working with them.
That's the one that has the overlay?
Yes.
That's the big one that she's been working on.
Everything else should be done by now?
Yep. Unless they get any feedback at the public hearings with your committee. Then they may have some updates after the hearing.
I, I, I'm, I'm really not, I'm not in a position, I mean, everybody else can, I'm not in a position to concur or disagree with these because I just, I hadn't spent time on them because I was assuming we were going to get these things from me.
Article thirtieth, first of all, is one that the board voted on the last time we met.
Yeah.
And it's very simple.
Yeah. Very simple.
And so we're just striking one sentence.
Article thirty-first.
Thirtieth.
Well, thirtieth is clean, we're done with that.
Oh, oh.
I mean, that's as simple as you can make it.
Yeah.
Oh, the, oh, yeah, 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 okay, not more than three consecutive terms, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, yep, we agree with that. We agree with, certainly, I always go back to the, the actual things and read them and see that they all really fit the language. Conceptually, I certainly agree with it, but I want to, I would typically look back and agree that it matches the language.
You can do that as much as you want, that's because you don't have anything else to do.
Yeah, well, that's where you, that's how you get it right though, unfortunately, it takes that.
Article thirtieth is good, we're moving on, article thirty-first. That's Martha's beg and, uh, wait a minute, yeah, that's not the overlay.
Now, this is the general bylaw that was worked by Town Council.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we have to do a general and a zoning bylaw to make sure that we've covered all of our bases. She recently changed the numbering and that's been updated and I'm going to confirm the numbering with the town clerk to make sure that the numbering system we're using here is the same as the adopted code.
So thirty-first is okay. Thirty-second is okay. Thirty-third. They're all connected. Now, thirty-fourth is Martha's overlay.
And I will get you this first thing tomorrow. It's what's drafted by K and P.
Does K and P have that?
They do, and they're, they're reviewing it right now, but it's a lot, it's a lot of pages, so I'll have to send it out to everyone so you can review it.
It's a copy.
Is it something that lends itself? Okay, okay, a lot of pages?
Yep.
Article thirty-fifth, sign regulations, trying to clean that up a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. I tell you.
They took the enforcement stuff out of it, basically, when we.
Yes, that was a great improvement, that was a great improvement. Yeah, and the concerns I have are things that need to be said at the hearing. I, I, there's portable A signs, as soon as you say that, wow, they're going to be everywhere in town. I think it's, I think it needs to be worked on, but that's, that's for the hearing.
Article thirty-six, withdrawn. Article thirty.
Oh, withdrawn?
Hold on, the, um.
Article thirty, this one.
Oh.
That's article thirty-six.
There's two articles thirty-sixes right now.
We got a new article thirty-six tonight, so, okay.
It's a little, I know, sorry.
Okay.
So what I did is rather than renumber everything, I just have two thirty-sixes. One is one that's going to be eliminated, the groundwater protection. And so I just went back to my article thirty-six being the citizen petition on the plastic bags.
Great.
Okay.
Good, the groundwater is out too, that was an R. Good.
So this one is pretty, you know, I kept it very simple, recommendation pending further review. I'm not even sure if the FinCon will have anything to write. And then the citizen petition, I just kept it very simple because we don't want to write too much on petition.
Okay. Article thirty-seven is okay, article thirty-eight.
The one thing I would do on article thirty-seven, if we may ask, on the title to make it Town Meetings, if somebody reads this at a distance and they're trying to read through their thing, they might say, what are we going to do, a Town Meeting? We're going to have a secret ballot vote? I think making it a plural will be very helpful. Secret ballot vote at Town Meetings.
Oh, Town Meetings. Add an S, okay.
Okay. Article thirty-eight. Relatively straightforward. Article thirty-nine. That's pretty straightforward. Done.
Well, after the article though, it would typically go on to say, right after the asterisks, there's the, the last line says, the following offices and questions. So I just highlighted the end questions. At this point, we.
Where are you, where are you?
I'm sorry, after the asterisk.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay. We can't, we can't forget to, to exclude, to take out end questions if we don't have any.
We do have one though.
Okay.
I have to draft that.
Okay, but there was none in here, okay, that's good. That's good, okay. So, but there's nothing in there now.
I, I was going to have work with Town Council on the question and this was with regards to the Masco, it would be a non-voting referendum.
Moving the main, Town Meetings.
Right, so that, that was, that was the one that I thought that we had talked about.
And we did.
And so that, will we, okay. And the other reason that, even if we didn't have that, that we might would be, what's going to happen with the final budgets and any of these particular items and recommendations from the FinCon and any changes that we might have as to how we want to deal with those things.
So just to review, the only open items are, we had one open item, but parrot was that twenty-two or something? And the zoning, everything else we've, we've agreed to close off, I'm not going to put words in between them, but I think that's what we've done.
Yeah.
So article twenty-second, Kelly's going to give us a change.
Yep.
And then the zoning is.
Article thirty-four is the other one that's kind of open, that, those are the only two we need to look at again and have further conversation on.
Thirty-four is the overlay.
There are still changes we've not seen that need to be considered here. Yes.
STM?
I'm sorry, the overlay, the zoning, and what we think of this?
Twenty-two and thirty-four. Twenty-two and thirty-four, the only ones that are still.
I need to give them thirty-four, yeah.
Hanging chairs.
Okay, spread the Town Meeting.
So we've just got this.
Article first is easy. You can have that, take it. Article second, prior bills, that's clean, is it?
If we need it, we might pull that, I have to check with that, they're going to need the date count in this week.
Article third.
That always comes out after the fact.
Yep. Article four, yeah, I just have a question, just on my own education. So, so we are authorized to borrow.
Excuse me, interrupting. The dimension meeting taking place in this building?
Oh, the dimension, it should be at the library typically, yeah.
It, it's at the library.
At the library, yeah.
That's where the interruption, hi, dear.
Nice to see you.
I could tell you, but I forgot.
Do I camera?
Well.
So, so we, I'm obviously using just a made-up number, we, we're authorized to borrow a hundred dollars. We don't need it, we only borrow fifty dollars. We don't need fifty, we only borrow fifty, but we need to rescind it? Why do we need to rescind?
Because we authorized two hundred twenty-six or two hundred twenty-seven. So I need to check the, I need to check this language, I just threw this together.
But why do we need, why, just sort of, but why do we need to rescind rather than just not borrow?
Because right now it's showing up on our debt portfolio.
Okay.
And approved, appropriate, but not authorized, authorized but not.
So there's an economic or financial.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. That's fine, that's fine.
Not issued.
It's a bookkeeping issue.
Authorized but not yet issued debt. So I need to double-check this with Town Council, I'm going to get Laura to make sure I've done this properly. I just was going off the top of my head for this one. I didn't want to forget to put the placeholder in there because we do want to get that off our books. And I can't, I also need to check if it's two twenty-seven or two twenty-six, but we're going to.
Article fiftieth, should be easy one.
Fifth.
But, but, but by the way, if we don't do it, and it just hung there, it's not going to have any, it's not going to have any direct effect on anything, we don't have to borrow it.
We've already done the borrowing. So we were authorized for two twenty-six or two twenty-seven, we only borrowed a hundred seventy-seven.
Right.
So we're trying to get the extra authorization off the bar.
It sits in market, would affect our audit. Because they don't like you saying you're going to borrow a whole lot of money, only spending some, and then the question is, you've authorized us to borrow the rest, what are you going to spend it on? And gaining the nuts does not count.
Article fifth, should be an easy one.
Yeah, we did this one last year.
We did it before. Police tasers. We've talked about that?
Yep.
Article seventh. That's equipping the trailer.
List of items, I meant to get you a list of items, but they put together a list, I forgot to do that. I'll get the list, but is the wording okay?
Article eight, yeah, the, the wording is okay on article seven. Article eight.
So we have a bunch of transfer forms to figure out what the amounts are on that, is that, is that what we're saying?
That's all, right, and, and that would, yeah, we have about sixty-one thousand dollars from tailings from old ATM articles. We've got the thirty-three, that doesn't need to be re-appropriated. And then whatever, I think the balance is maybe fifty-one, and we're just looking for tailings for that. And then the old, the other article, and we will probably have it as a budget transfer under article, under the budget transfer article, we're guessing a snow and ice deficit, we don't know what that number is yet.
I asked her a number. I asked her a number the other day in the.
Yeah, they, it's a crop sheet, so they don't like to say it either way.
Wait two more days.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, they've been pretty busy the last two weeks.
Well, they just saw in the last two hours, they've upped it from four to six to five to eight.
Oh, good, oh, good.
I thought it was going to miss out, what happened in the last twenty-four hours?
They're supposed to miss, yeah, well, second time they've missed that.
Okay. Dump truck is done.
Oh, no, just, just a small thing under the explanation, just make it, instead of omnibus budget, general operating budget.
Third line from the bottom, is that where you're talking about?
Yeah, right.
General operating budget, still on this.
Article nine.
Oh, this is last year when we voted this fund, I don't think we had the final numbers. I think this item is, this is really for legal expenses related to the negotiation of the contract. And maybe, I think we might have been a few hundred dollars short on our, on our boxer cable TV contract. So this is really a housekeeping thing. It might, I'd be surprised if it, maybe it's five thousand tops, six, six, six tops.
And you're talking article nine?
Article nine.
Okay.
So these are directly from the PEC cable fund.
And it's to pay bills for the current year, not next year.
That's right.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And then article ten, these are the, I had a chance to speak with Brad Sweet, went through all of the, the rooms and the charts, and, and this was the list of items and I submitted that to you a couple of times. And this represents the total amount for capital equipment expenses for audio cameras, wiring, labor, and, and all of that's really just listed here as a capital appropriation from the PEG Access Fund.
And we've got enough money in that fund?
Yes.
Okay, you know, I would just, to be minor in this, but it almost looks like where it says item, that's really the location, with the exception of labor installation, and summary really is the item presented.
I'll, um.
In the cases of, in case of the ninth, why can't we do that under the transfers? Under two, uh, three? Why can't we do that transfer?
I can check. I just thought we were keeping it separate because it's not a general fund transfer, it's from a separate.
It is separate, but it's, it's from two, right?
But typically, our budget transfers specifically are related to our general fund budgets. You don't necessarily want to muddy the water with those. So I thought that it was cleaner if we just kept it separate.
To say, at Masco, we do that, we have a lot of revolving funds. And the idea is that funds come into it strictly from designated sources and go out for designated purposes. Anytime you're transferring for something that is not a normally designated purpose, you have to have a separate special piece that acknowledges the unusual transfer from a non-usual source.
Yeah, the other, the other reason maybe to keep it this way is that last year when we voted to establish the PEG Access Fund, we had a separate warrant article which talks about the appropriation. So this would essentially align with that and make up the monies that weren't appropriated already. It would be cleaner next time around because we'll know what those expenses are before.
What does PEG stand for?
Public Educational and Governmental.
Governmental.
Could we, in the first place, that it is mentioned there, could we just put what that is?
Oh, yes. Yep, what it stands for. Good idea.
Everybody okay with nine, we're moving on, Dick?
Yeah.
I mean, we could clean it up by making part of the transfers, but.
That's all right, it's a question, I think it's worth, well, yeah.
Article ten.
I don't know if anybody shares any.
There's no special reason that this is in the STM though, right? Why would, why did we not put this into the regular ATM? Is there any particular reason why it's in STM?
No, I just kept it separate because last year we had it in the special and because it's not a general fund item and I didn't want to confuse people and have them think that it was general fund when it's not.
And you're transferring it from a fund that exists now.
Yeah, it already exists, we're not appropriating, we don't have to raise any money for it, it's already there. And we, we, it would be better for us to be able to access the money sooner rather than later if we want to start purchasing any of the equipment in anticipation of getting the Town Hall ready by November.
So this money already exists.
Well, that's a reason, that would be a reason to do it, because we want to get the equipment, we want to start getting equipment before the end of this fiscal year, that's a reason to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
So the key on this is, this is coming out of cable viewers' pockets.
Yes.
As opposed to, it's not out of the general tax issue.
Correct.
I personally.
It has been for those many years, because we've been saving money.
Fifty-three, fifty-three cents of a bill or something like that.
Yeah, but we have chapter ninety funds, they don't go out of the general operating budget either. So it's, it's not, it's nothing wrong with doing it in the general, in the eight annual Town Meeting. The logic here is that we're trying to get it before the end of this fiscal year so we can spend it. That's the logic for the STM, I got it, I got it, okay.
Article ten is okay.
Yep.
Article eleven.
Now, article eleventh, we could also just move into transfers. It occurred to me when I, after last night, it occurred to me that we could easily transfer that. It doesn't have to be a separate warrant article, it's really just a, so I, I could go either way, it doesn't matter to me. The only advantage to having it as a separate article, I think, is because. The only advantage to having it as a separate article, I think, is because if we do buy it, we're not, we don't have to, I mean, if we try the software and we hate it, we don't have to continue it forever at two thousand dollars a year, but there is sort of a reoccurring cost to continue it. And so traditionally, I thought that if you're, um, if this were a higher amount of money, it would have easily been just added into the capital requests. Um, and if there was enough money in special town meeting or during the existing budget for transfers, we probably, or the FinCom might have put it back into the special anyway. So this one I started just having, it was a placeholder, and I was gonna look for some information from Karen when I meet with her of what their preference is and if they've actually had a vote on it.
That's it? It went on. That's it? Item number three, capital budget.
Oh, kind of. This is more of a placeholder, um-
This is a different tab or something?
No, it should be, it should be three. We just have the capitals.
Oh, no, it's number three, tab three, tab three. I thought I seen it.
You're picking that up very fast.
Yeah, I am.
I, I don't-
You don't have substance to go for detail.
I didn't, I didn't have time to do a sheet, but what I did was just do a quick tally of, excuse me, the capital articles that are in this, assuming you're not counting the dump trucks, dump truck, sand it with plow, if you were to add up the, um, the capital expenses from, I suppose it would probably, I'm probably at the point now that we've got the warrant, God willing, behind us, that I can just do some summary information from Monday's meeting to sort of walk people through. I have a spread, it's basically a one-page sheet, not, I don't have it in your books right now, but I just wanted to sort of lay out and get your feedback as to what you think would be most helpful. Um, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven articles on the warrant that have to do with capital expenditures. I wanted, and those total, the, the ones that are on here are less, I think they're about two hundred thousand, um, total, not including the truck. So I guess what I'm wondering now is, for Monday's meeting, what would be most helpful for you or for us to convey, um, during a regular meeting about the capital plan, because what I started to do was a chart that shows the overall plan for this year and what that looks like, and that's trimmed down since we started talking about it earlier in the year. But I have like a one-pager where it shows, you know, here's a picture of the police SUV cruiser, how much it costs, and, and how much we anticipate it'll be in the next few years. A picture of the fire engine too, um, so it's really just a quick synopsis of it, but I didn't know, what is the information that you think would be most helpful for you to have on Monday prior to us getting the warrant signed and approved so that the capital items sort of have had a chance to get your votes of approval or whatever we do from here?
This capital program that I see right here, what is the cable equipment, et cetera, et cetera? That's what's in the STM?
Yes.
That's in the STM that we just talked about?
Yes.
That's the map, okay.
Yep.
And that's the only thing that's, this, what's-
That's all I have here, except for what's in the, the board, oh, well, that's an old list, I was gonna update that list, but I haven't done that for today. What, which list is that from? Yeah, this is the old, this was February twenty-fifth was the list, and I've just pared it down since then. So what I would do is just update this, I didn't have a chance to do it today because I was still just on the warrant.
Okay, I was gonna ask you the, the difference, why, why we had, oh, I'm sorry, this is backside of this.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know, it's not, not here.
So that's an older version.
Well, I'm not here, but the, the original one that we passed out was the backside of that.
Yeah. So I was planning just to update that and just to do one-page picture of each project and sort of give you an overview of what it looked like. So if we're buying a police vehicle now, we would see, you know, what the, what the plan is moving forward for the next four years. Um, but for the most part, we've tried to come in under the guidelines, we've, we've eliminated any need for borrowing in this. We've allowed the opportunity for the FinCom to basically utilize the extra hundred thousand towards either paying down, um, any other borrowing. And I think that this will help us to, even though it's sort of, um, pared back a little bit, the fact that we could allow, if we can get support for all these projects, I think especially the forty thousand dollars for doing the records management system will provide a master plan for us to be able to move forward so that when we get into the new town hall, we'll have a plan of action. And we won't have to necessarily be buying software before we know, you know, how exactly that fits into the overall picture. But for the most part, all of the articles that are here are either funded, so the water tank inspections, that's through the, the, um, the Water Enterprise, and then all of the other ones are probably, I assume I would recommend that they would be using free cash for them since they're one-time expenses. And so for the most part, we're coming in at two hundred and we're putting a small amount towards our town facilities. Actually, when I did this new scale, instead of just doing the eighteen-five, I think I worked, I'm gonna talk with the FinCom about what that number should be and what they would feel comfortable with, but out of the three hundred thousand in guidelines, we could easily have, we have two hundred thousand on the, you know, on the warrant for capital.
And in the process, you threw out forty thousand dollars for the records management?
Originally, it was going to be a lot higher, but-
But do you, but do you, this is the first time I heard the forty.
Yeah, yeah, I pared that.
Are you fairly, are you fairly confident that that's what the consultant is gonna charge?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, I spoke with her today to get a better sense of, and she said, the software is definitely an investment and it's definitely something you wanna do, but it's premature without having a plan first, to buy the software before you can really do anything with it. We need to assess inventory and get a master plan, know what we're dealing with so that we can carve out our plan and best maximize what we currently have in getting back into that building.
Do we have to go out?
Do we have to go out to bid for this now or something, or forty thousand dollars, it seems like?
Um, we'll probably have to do an RFP, but I'll tell you, she's done a lot of work and it might even be on the state bid list, so I don't think it's gonna be difficult to do, but I've invited her to come in for a few days to do an assessment, so I'm giving her, um, I'm paying her for some consulting. But it's really so that we can go to town meeting with a firm price quote in hand and say, this is what we're getting, this is how much it's gonna cost, and this is what you're gonna see at the other side of it.
So where's this, where's this money coming from, how much is this?
I'm proposing that it would be coming from our free cash, because this represents-
No, 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 you say just giving her some money now?
I had some money in my professional services budget.
Your professional services budget, you mean?
Your professional services.
It's a lack of special? Okay.
Yep.
See, you do kind of get our authority, I assume you, okay, I assume you've approved it, okay. Uh, how much is that out of, because we're, we're going for more money and you're talking about doing a reserve fund transfer, unanticipated emergencies.
No, not for this.
Not for what?
How much are we talking about roughly?
For the forty?
How much in consulting roughly?
Maybe four days at five hundred dollars, two thousand.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so you're not talking about the forty grain, okay, okay.
That's fine, that's true.
To get to this forty, I need to spend some money to do an assessment.
Yeah.
I'm not an expert, admittedly.
Okay. I think that's all, are we gonna go to executive session at this point?
I don't think we need to, but can I just tell you why? The things that I need to say are very brief and I can update you on one of them.
Do you want it?
Okay, yeah, maybe I do.
Can you say it with the camera on or do we just look?
Vote, we're going to-
Yeah, we should, yeah, let's just do it decently.
I ask one, one question, one question before, should we turn the corner here for a minute? Um, where, where, perhaps I shouldn't know this, but where are we versus the, not versus, where's the Fink? When's this, when do we connect with the FinCom to get a general sense of where things are?
I'm trying to, I'd like to get to the, well, I'm gonna go to the meeting tonight, and then I'm gonna meet with Karen and Mike this week, and I'm gonna be meeting with the finance team this week just to make sure all are ducks in a row.
Okay, then do we have, do we have a joint meeting, or how, how are we gonna get a sense of where the overall budget is?